Call the City Council Work Session to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Here.
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 She's excused.
Here.
Here. And several items, so we'll get right to it. Mr. Pastu?
Thank you, Your Honor. First item I'd like to talk about is we'll have Mr. Lewis come up here and talk about the recycling cart rollout and some of the changes that are starting to take effect. We'll get Mr. Lewis in and out and so he can enjoy his family tonight on a Monday night, so.
As how I don't have any regular agenda items, I'll be more than happy to take our city manager up on his generous offer. Honorable Mayor Kousel, Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. I've brought a little show and tell with me today, so. First of all, most of you, since I know we're televising this, hopefully all of our residents have now received one of these new service brochures in the mail. Those are supposed to be direct mailed. We have thousands of spares here at City Hall, so as we go through and we have new residents come in or if people misplaced theirs, we have those available now at the public services counter. Most importantly, on the recycling standpoint, there's a little pink insert in this, and we did that on purpose so that would stand out from the rest of it. You can actually probably tear it off once you're done with that. It basically says, "New 64-gallon recycle cars for residents. For those who currently recycle, be sure to have your bin at the curb the week of March 26th, and Waste Management will deliver a 64-gallon cart to your home." And so if there are any residents that don't recycle but would like to start right out with our big new cart here, just call the office and let us know, and we'll get those delivered. So my little show and tell here, I'll move the mic around. This is what we presently have, and we've been passing this out. You normally have to come to the Department of Public Services and pick one of these up. These, I think, are 18-gallon recycle bins, and these are what we've been collecting right along here. So what the resident should do is if they already have one of these, make sure to put these out at the curb line the week of March 26th. That'll be the first, that's the week we've chosen for distribution because it's ahead of the start of picking up the carts. And what they'll do is they'll come by with one of these beauties. I believe it's got a yellow lid. I haven't seen them yet, but I believe that's what we're doing. These are 64-gallon capacity carts, and they'll drop one of these off. So if you don't want one of these, we're telling people, "Don't put your bin out," and then they won't drop one of these off. So we thought that was better than generating and forcing 3,000 or 4,000 people to have to call us and request one of these, so it'll just be a signal. Councilman, I believe, has a question?
Do you, on the small ones, if they put it out, do they put it out full or empty?
You can put it out full.
Okay.
They'll collect it.
Okay.
Yeah, just put it out like you normally would, and if they see that, that's the symbol that you would like a cart.
Okay.
And then you will get to keep that. So what they'll do is they'll leave you a 64-gallon cart, and they'll also leave your bin behind, because they don't want them back.
Not recyclable?
If you want to recycle the old bin because it's in poor shape, stick it in the new cart, and they'll pick it up. Good question, Mayor. So that's kind of the highlight, and I know that's what most of the people are looking forward to, but I've got a few other things. I know Councilwoman Vining has a question.
How many gallons is the new one again?
The new one is 64, and it will be collected weekly. So we're almost quadrupling our recycling capacity every week. So we're hoping to really encourage people to recycle as much as possible, and the bonus is they've got lids, so we don't have to worry about things blowing around. So that was why we elected to go with the recycling carts. Now, if for some reason you don't want the larger cart, you don't have to accept it. You don't have to take it. If you happen to put your recycling out the week of the 26th, and they drop off one of these, and you don't want it, just call us, and we'll have it come picked back up again. So that's probably the easiest way to do it. So in addition to the recycling cart rollout, which will start, and then the collection, of course, will start the very next week with the week of April 2nd, so that's the week right after Easter. We also are going to start our yard waste collection that same week. So we kind of did those two things the same week, put them together. April 2nd is the start of yard waste collection, and again, that's weekly through the first full week of December then, after that. And then the thing that many people have been waiting for, and that is the start of the unlimited collection, that will start the first week of May, which is actually, May 7th is the first Monday in May this year. So we'll start that the week of May 7th. And exactly what is allowed in that is detailed in full in the brochure here. It's, I laughingly said, Vince and I, when we reviewed the contract language, we said, "They'll take everything but the kitchen sink," and then I noted up, "Oh, wait, they'll take the kitchen sink too." So there's quite a few things that they will take. Don't stick engines to cars out there. I think they even go so far as, what's that?
No transmissions.
No transmissions, but I think if you do put a fender out there, I think they'll take that. I think they'll actually take a car hood. But as we know, things like that that end up on the curb a lot of times get scavenged for scrap metal before they even get picked up. But, so there are a few limitations to that unlimited collection here. They'll take a small amount of construction debris, no concrete or asphalt, so they're not going to take those things. Those are the types of things. You'll still have to make arrangements. We will still offer public dumping at DPS facility for things like that, but we're hoping that those are fewer and farther between than they have been to date. So if you're doing a small home remodeling project where you've got some drywall, things like that, they'll take those, but you have to have those properly bagged or in cans so that they're not just laying loose at the curb. So, Councilman?
Some of this information on the website as well?
Yes, I believe we have the service brochure up on the web. I will double-check that. I meant to do that before I left today, and I just forgot. So the brochure, we do have that in electronic form, so that should be up on the webpage. So I think that covers the highlights that I had. Oh, one additional thing, too. Obviously, we're not having trash carts like this, because they typically would use the bigger ones, the 96-gallon, and with the parked cars, it becomes a little bit more of a challenge working around both recycling and the bigger trash tubs. But we did increase the size of the cans now and the weight that you can have in any single bag or can. So we went, right now, it's a maximum of 32-gallon cans. It's going to 35-gallon cans. So it's a little bit bigger, and it's going from a 50-pound per bag or can limit to a 60-pound per bag or can limit. So we're hoping those enhancements will help our residents out. And like I said, the unlimited collection, that's got a number of advantages for us, and of course, it's convenience for residents, one. It's giving people that may have some blighted conditions on their property another way to take care of that on their own, so that we don't have to come and charge city employee time to pick that up. So we're hoping to aggressively push the blight issues, so now there are fewer excuses for people not to clean their property up. So we're hoping that that has an effect, both in resident convenience and in community appearance in general, so.
And if I might add to that, though, that when you do that, it has to go out in a timely manner. We don't want it out there all week in the terrace, so at that point, it becomes a blight issue, so.
Yes.
Use some discretion. We also know that there may be others that take advantage of bringing material inside to the city. We've talked with Waste Management. If you see, on a regular basis, a large amount of refuse there at the curb, and we can follow up on that and essentially special assess the property owner if it continues. So we are, you know, it's a good program that we have, but we're not gonna, we're gonna be watching for abuses.
It's for our residents, not for people that bring in material from outside of the city, so. And we sort of have that on our eye. I think the route manager and I said, "Well, the first time, pick it up. Second week, take a picture of it. The third week, come and see me, and I won't necessarily make you pick it up." So that's one of those special cases. And we find it's a little bit easier to deal with the few outliers in circumstances like this than right now where we're chasing that fourth and fifth bag that somebody might put out. So we're hopeful that this will be a great increase for our, a great increase in service for our residents, but we'll see. So May 7th, start of unlimited collection, and if you have any questions, feel free to contact the Department of Public Services. I can give out the phone number for that. That's (734) 384-9125. Vince, is there anything I?
Oh, I think we got it all.
And I'm told that I need to take my props out of the way here when I leave, so.
Sure.
I don't want tell items with me out into the hallway.
Good question.
Yes, if we're all wrapped up with refuse, in the interest of getting Mr. Lewis home to his family, I do have a question, not related to this, but is related to you and your department. The winter that we've just experienced, the freeze thaw, freeze thaw, has been particularly troublesome with the roads. And I was, there were some specific intersections that I have in mind. I know that the Y between, you know, as first and third split off is particularly bad, turning on to third. I'm sure you're well aware of many of these places driving around, just as many of our residents are.
Oh, yeah, I'm afraid so.
I drove on that road getting here today, so I was just wondering if the DPS crews were out patching and how that process is going to work and what that timeline looks like.
Certainly. Well, I wish I'd give you a better idea on the timeline. We seem to have had the last week or so, we've had a lot of fits and starts on that. The DPS crews are out patching. We've got a few one-ton dump trucks, and that's what we use. We've spent in the last week, I think, $5,000 in material alone, just purchasing cold patch, and we're filling it up as fast as we can. We're getting out there. Unfortunately, the last week hasn't done us any favors. We had to actually plow late last week, so that, we thought we had it. We had the worst combination that you can possibly have, and that's melting snow, frost coming out of the ground, then heavy rains on top of that. So it was, it's not been a good week. We're hoping-
Don't make it easy for you, do they?
No, Mother Nature doesn't help us. Some years they do, this year she doesn't. But it'll be the same number, too. If you have any pothole complaints, you can call them in. (734) 384-9125. There's the, I don't call it action line, but it's our replacement for our action line. We just started My Civic, and that's the Citizen Response Management system that's on our webpage. You can report an issue. There's a report an issue button, and there should be a category for potholes on there. I get a couple of those an hour that keep popping through, so we know they're out there. Some of the streets we've had to hit multiple times. North Custer's a great example of that. We've just, it takes a day or so just to get all of the holes on that particular street filled. So if you've got any council members, feel free to pass those along as well. I know Councilwoman Vining called in too just today as well, so, Councilman, if you have any others, let me know. I'll be happy to put them on the list. Time-wise, we like to get everything within 48 hours. It's probably not realistic right now, but we'll do the best we can, try to prioritize the major streets first.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That's helpful.
Appreciate it.
I know we've talked in the past, and I'm sure we'll talk in the future.
Absolutely. That's what I'm here for.
Thanks, Patrick.
I think you have one more. Mayor?
One more, one more thing. Are you aware that some of the citizens are not able to use the website to report their problems? They're having some issues.
Yes, if I may, through the mayor. Yeah, it kind of came to my attention. We had, in fact, you were copied on one of that. So Jody Egan, our communications person, was forwarded that message, and so she's looking in to see what, and I think, I'm trying to remember, her response is that there is a problem, and they're in touch with the vendor to make that correction, so.
Along those departments get calls when they can't report online, so if you could let the departments call know that there's a problem, and then when it's resolved, that customer service issues. Thanks, because we refer them to the website, and that probably wouldn't be a good idea right now.
All right, well, if there's no other questions, like I said, feel free to call us, residents, council members alike. If you have any questions or concerns, give us a jingle. That's what we're here for, so.
Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you much. I'll take my toys with me.
Quietly. The next item we have, would like to discuss, this was brought up a couple of work sessions ago, is to discuss a process possibly of reducing the Citizens Planning Commission from its current nine-member system to seven members. I'm just opening that up. I don't have anything in particular. I think our council member, Ike Wanjley, was the one that brought that up, wanting to discuss it.
I think we, it was kind of consistent with the effort that we, or the reduction that we had at the zoning board of appeals, taking that down to five members from its, I think they had seven originally. And many communities are moving from nine to seven. Some are moving from seven to five. I think in Monroe's case, because of the size of the community, it makes sense at least going down to seven members. My suggestion is one member from each precinct, as we currently do, plus pulling one member from one of the other committees or commissions in order to cross-pollinate to increase communication, for example, between somebody from the Brownfield Authority set on the CPC or the Downtown Development Authority, even the Port Authority. It would provide some additional insight in terms of what some of the issues are with some of the other committees and what their, what some of their planning needs are. So that was my thought.
You know, we've looked at different boards and commissions. The traffic committee's another one. We had nine members. I don't think that was necessary. We talked about it as a council. Got that to a number that probably, because things, traffic control orders, for instance, come to the council anyways. As John said, we have the ZBA, and that challenge was more about getting sufficient members there to make sure there was a, not just, you've got a quorum, but they had a right to have a full board if you go before the ZBA. So that made some sense, and we've had some challenges getting members on various boards and commissions. The planning commission, it's been traditionally with nine. I think seven could work. I think seven representing from each of the precincts. I always thought that, I hadn't thought about looking at another board or commission that might fill that. I'd have to think that through, which board would be appropriate, and then finding somebody to do double duty as opposed to another resident from any one of the precincts that would serve on that. You know, we have, we have members now, but I have to look at that as well, because we have some that are serving in unexpired terms, and we have duplicate precincts, at least in three, making sure we look at that. Those, another that's not been resolved yet as far as an appointment. So I'd have to look at those and how it would fit and work in the time. To me, it's about timing as well. Look at those dates, when those other appointments on the board come due. You know, some of those, there goes Patrick. Some of those, and how that fits of which precinct would be the, I'll say the extras, where some are long-term out because they're, I think they're three-year, three-year appointments, I believe. And I'm thinking six, but they're not six. That's somebody else, so they're threes. So I, I'm not opposed to looking at that. We've talked about it previously. I don't know if there's other members in the council think otherwise.
Your Honor.
Yeah, I just think that before we make any decision regarding that, we should look at some of the attendance figures of the past year, see who has attended, who has not for that committee, get a good idea as to who we can count on, who we cannot, that type of thing. Sometimes you'll get a member from a precinct that's not there, you know, for three, four months in a row. I know that because obviously I was just recently a member of the CPC. So I think we just need to get some statistics on that, see where that goes, and that might drive what we need to do after that.
I think the other, couple other things, Your Honor, that we evaluate the CPC along with the other committees is that the CPC's, like the Downtown Development Authority has, I believe, the downtown members, the board members can serve two consecutive, I think, three-year terms. Isn't it correct?
Correct. You can serve two consecutive terms. You can serve again at another date, but you have to be off for a term.
For a term.
Some boards and commissions have that, some do not. That might be, as we look down the road in our goals and objectives that are coming up this evening about, you know, that Citizens Academy and getting people to have an interest in serving on boards and commissions, it might help resolve some of those, making sure we have people to fill as we continue to look forward. So, that's another idea, would be limited terms, so to speak, as we move forward.
Yeah, Your Honor, I was thinking two, three-year terms for CPC, and the other part of it is, I think, which is critical, and we've talked about it before, is that we have a requirement in the ordinance, if we reconstitute the CPC, that within a certain period of time, at least within the first 18 months, that a new member has to go through some type of educational training in order to maintain their position on the CPC. I think that that gives them better education of what a planning commission should do, and then it also gives the city some added protection relative to any type of liability and risk management, that the members are, have some basic training on role and responsibilities.
I know that here in the last few months, I know the staff has started some of those trainings. I know, I think it was easily a year-plus ago that members of CPC and ZBA did attend. Unfortunately, not all did, and I think this was, your point is that ensure that everybody that serves has that initial training and then that follow-up as they maybe start a second term. So not opposed to those ideas. What I'll do is I'll go back and look at the list and the precincts. I have been looking at it since we talked, asked to bring it today. I don't have anything at this point to move forward. I know there's at least one appointment that is pending on the board, that a current member is willing to continue to serve, but was not asked, asked not to be reappointed, because they had served three terms and were ready to move forward. So I'm looking on that precinct. I have a couple of interests, and I'll, once I get that resolved, I'll bring it forward. Vince, next one.
Yes, next item I would like to talk about is a possible subarea plan for the former Lazy Boy headquarters. Mr. Green, I've got a couple of handouts there for yourself, and I think Mark and probably Mr. Lake as well. And we had some conversation through the mayor that with Lazy Boy, let them know we were going to have this item on for discussion tonight. And one of the handouts I have is, you know, what, kind of lays out what a subarea plan would address, going through the bullets. It provides some land use alternatives, assesses economic conditions through a market analysis, traffic circulation. If there's any site, environmental conditions are noted, any infrastructure needs that would be necessary for the site, in this case redevelopment, any possible economic incentives that could be offered, and then intergovernmental challenges also associated with it. At the end of the day, what the goal is, is to provide the development community with a plan that answers many of the zoning, market, infrastructure, and traffic questions to expedite the redevelopment process. If we've heard it once, we've heard it numerous times, that the one thing, that it, the two things that are important is timing and a degree of certainty. It's a big investment on their part to look at a site, and if we could answer many of those questions, and they could have some comfort level that they could proceed forward within the context of what's identified in the subarea plan, you know, we've accomplished one of the goals through our redevelopment-ready process as well. So second part I have on here is why is it appropriate for the former Lazy Boy headquarters site? You know, in my opinion, it's certainly the most significant parcel within the city, along Telegraph Corridor. The site resides in two political jurisdictions, the city of Monroe and also Frenchtown, and having a coordinated land use plan reduces the redevelopment costs rather than having them go in with uncertainty in both. They could go in with one process that's been accepted by both jurisdictions. Interestingly enough, we have a county drain, the Mason Run, that runs right through the middle of the building, again, creating a property redevelopment challenge, absent of there being an approved subarea plan. Traffic analysis and engineering allows for an orderly development of the site and certainly reduces the cost to developers. We have a signal at Holiday Drive in the middle of the site, and it's also located within a half-mile of the highest traffic volume intersection in the county. So it is a pretty significant area from a traffic standpoint, so any redevelopment has to take that into consideration. There is some possible consideration of connection with Huber Drive to the site on the southeast end of the property to improve vehicle circulation. The property does abut a residential neighborhood to the south, which is a consideration for the intensity of redevelopment on the site. In order to achieve the highest and best use, economic incentives may be necessary. This should be part of an adopted subarea plan to further entice redevelopment and conduct a retail market analysis for the site-specific, identifying commercial use is likely to succeed at that location. You know, Lazy Boy does have an interest in how it is redevelopment, and they're certainly, you know, want what's best for the community. And I think more importantly, what happens in this parcel will go a long way toward defining what this corridor is going to look like for the next several decades. So consequently, if we, if it is redevelopment, we want it to be in the best interest, not only for that site, but in the long term for the corridor itself. If you go through a deliverable, certainly a land use plan that we would hope would be adopted by both city and Frenchtown, faster, more reliable process for developers, have some site-specific market analysis, hopefully have the traffic engineering analysis out so that you don't have, developers have to incur a lot of that time and cost with their proposal. Economic incentives would allow the developer to know what we're willing to offer, and more importantly, at the end of the day, you've got a marketing plan for the site itself that meets with the approval of both jurisdictions. On the backside, what we'd be recommending is certainly to engage Frenchtown Township in this process, looking at a work group, you know, involve a council member, a planning commission member, Mr. Green as community development director, Mr. Cochran as economic development coordinator, myself, Tim Lake with Monroe Business Development Corporation, and I think a Frenchtown representative. One of the things, you know, in order to expedite the process, I think, you know, Mr. Green and I are very comfortable with some of the work that's been done recently by MKSK. They were involved with the Prometica, Macomb Street, subarea plan alternatives that were presented to the community. were presented to the community, and the downtown master plan that they're currently working on. They are familiar with the community and the economic conditions within the community. I put an estimated cost out there, fifty thousand in that neighborhood. Funding is currently available in the current fiscal year to do this. If the project was to go forward, we could probably anticipate it being completed sometime in early June, or late June, early July. And then the one thing I put in there also is limited community engagement. It really is kind of a mixed-use parcel, and clearly, when the city went through the Sustainable Monroe Project, there was a lot of input that went into that. The need to go back out there and hold, you know, I think a number of community forums may not be all that necessary since that input and community engagement is fairly recent. So I throw that out there for discussion. Certainly from an administration standpoint, we're comfortable with making this recommendation. We think it is pretty important, long-term, to take a, put together a good plan for this site.
Are you looking for any initial thoughts from council regarding what's being suggested as far as subarea plan, but also the approach and some recommendation? Any comments from council or others? John?
Got some comments. Where does, how does Lazy Boy fit into this?
Well, I think that, long-term, that, you know, certainly they have an interest in the site itself. And again, I think they're committed, long-term, to having what, you know, is in the best interest of the city. I think this would provide a tool to help with the marketing of the facility for something that, you know, you know, is mirrors the vision of the community rather than just, you know, a reuse of the existing facility.
So I guess where I was coming from is that if you, you engage somebody to do this study, is Lazy Boy concurrently still marketing the property? And then if they find a potential buyer, then is the study for naught because they haven't, there's not a, they haven't bought into the fact that, of doing the study. I mean, basically, what I'm getting at is Lazy Boy willing to pull, pull the mark, pull the, the property off the market until the, the subarea plan is done in order to identify what the community's expectation and vision is. That's, that's the question I have.
I think the conversations to date are recognizing where the city wants to move forward in a subarea plan and the benefits for that and the development. Their strong desire to make sure that the property, as it moves forward, is what's best for the community, but also not sitting there for two or three years, not being developed or removed, or whatever the case may be. And the understanding that, and just preliminary discussions about this, that as it is marketed and people come in, knowing this is going to be the path forward of how the, the city's looking for any corporation or company to come in that's going to develop it, knowing that you're going to have to consider what, what it is in the interest for the property, but the city's approach on a subarea plan. So that's been, that's part of the discussion to date. So it's still out there on, on the market, but any, anybody wishes to develop, as we had recently, is going to get this message as they come forward, and they're going to, some of the challenges they may have if it doesn't fit into some of what we're, what they're going to have to produce as far as the commercial development.
Okay. Yeah, some of the other comments I have on the deliverables, land use plan is good, but I think a build-out analysis is better in terms of being able to show developers exactly how the property could be built out. The other part is actually is part of the deliverables, having a zoning plan that's done. So everybody's in agreement with what the zoning could be for the property. So if a developer does come, they don't have to go through a deliberative process at the planning commission for zoning. Then my last comment is, is though, and I recognize that, you know, MKSK is a good firm, but on a project like this, I think it's important that you either go out for RFP, or you have a selective process where you, you ask three or four different firms to put in proposals because part of that proposal process is also an idea exchange. And whoever, whoever the committee is, that's going to be the stakeholder committee that's going to be involved in this, will be able to see what other firms have done relative to these type of projects in bringing some other ideas. Okay, so I-
An outreach of, of certain companies that we may have some experience with-
Experience with, yeah.
Or their experience elsewhere, but as opposed to the RFP and that longer process.
Process, yes.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Brian?
Yeah, I would add on your, in the city administration recommendation in the work group, there's no Lazy Boy representative there. Since it is their property, it probably would be wise to involve them in those discussions.
I would envision they would be engaged certainly as in the front end of the, the process. And, you know, we would keep them involved and aware of where we're developing through that. So if they wish to have someone, I certainly would not take any objection to it at all.
Well, I'm just suggesting we possibly invite them to be part of that group.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just a quick one, you know, as you're reading through this and some of the challenges that have been for various sites, I'm not going to just say Lazy Boy. I like the fact that a subarea plan where this might fit elsewhere in the, in the city as well, some properties that I think we've identified in our, our goals and objectives discussions that, you know, as a, as somebody that wants to develop comes forward, and it's easy to then to present that as opposed to trying to think which, where do they go first? The first stop is, here's what our vision is as a city, and with through our, our staff and our departments, about what a subarea plan is, and it might be a little different from one location to the other as far as just the size alone and what maybe the development could be. The idea is that you're really putting forward this approach that, and what the delivers will be, deliverables will be on those locations. So I think it reads well and gets us through there. You could, you know, take all those appropriate things on this site that are, that are on this page on the front, in the middle, and just replace that with the next site. And what you recognize those, I won't call, challenges and development opportunities that would be on those. So I like the format as a start, and I think it's a good way to go for this property, and I could think of a couple others. I'm sure the administration has that too, and staff. Dammit.
I like it.
All right, Vince, I think we're-
Let's talk about the MKSK is, I put that out there. If council wants me to, Mr. Green to solicit other proposals, we got a handful of firms that, that we know and we've worked with. If that's your pleasure, I'm not sure.
I mean, MKSK has done some really good work for us here recently, and also in the committee, when you talk about the current Prometica site and what the long-term development, I thought their work there was good. Not opposed to considering others. I just, to me, it's about timing to get it there. I don't know if that's a long extension, and how do we manage and pick that? And I'd leave that to the administration to, to look at and say, here's firms that we've may want to consider. I don't know if we've done, it seems to me we've done that before, but I'm trying to think when it was.
Thinking out loud is that they could probably turn around a proposal fairly quickly if we were contacting a number of firms that have worked with us. And so we may not be able to, to put it on the meeting on the nineteenth, but if we came back certainly by the April second meeting, we probably-
I mean, you've got firms that would be able to do this type of work. You got McKenna, who's done work with the city. You've got Gibbs Planning Group out of Birmingham, that's a new urbanist company that does this. You got JJR, and you've got Niederfeld out of Grand Rapids, that's a new urbanist, does subarea planning. You've got three or four firms here in the state that have got some pretty good track record on these projects that you could bring to bear, or at least take a look at what they've done.
At the pleasure of council, then? I'm fine with it. Okay. All right, good.
Very good. Next item.
Next item, I had sent to the city council, I did bring the copies with me, but we had received a request from ALCC to have the city incur, or reimburse them for a little over five thousand dollars for some furnace work that they had done there in early December. I think, I know they were having some, some challenges, and I'm not sure I could answer anything even with that. Thank you, though. But, you know, I mentioned, look, I'm not going to make that decision because anything, it's going to require a budget amendment on the part of the city council if you were inclined to do that. I haven't spent a lot of time with Anthony there talking about the details other than I think it is working now and functioning. So throw it out there for council, if you're inclined to do so, we'd have to amend the budget.
First off, has it, has the repairs been done and the expenditure made?
I think the expenditure, yeah, yeah.
And is it out of the current funding that the ALCC receives? And so they're looking for reimbursement back for an expenditure that was made because it's the part of the facility. Okay.
And, your honor?
Go on.
If I may, I probably won't be able to vote on this. I haven't spoken with the city attorney on that yet, if it comes to a vote. But I would like to say that the boiler and the elevator, since we're talking about it, the ALCC does incur a lot of expenses maintaining those two items especially. The elevator, of course, has to have regular maintenance, and the boiler is always going out. I'm assuming that it's the original boiler? I'm not sure. But every year, we have issues with it, and we are spending thousands every year. So I just wanted to put that out there for everyone.
Your honor, if I may ask Kelly real quick, is this what we'd call a Band-Aid, or is this a permanent fix for the furnace?
I believe that was a, well, I'm not going to call it permanent.
Yeah.
I didn't actually, I don't know exactly what they did. I know we have the invoices there. I don't know if you have them in, in front of you.
Yeah, but they're difficult to read.
Yeah, you can barely see them.
There are challenges, I read through them.
Yeah. I just know every year, the boiler is a, is an issue.
I guess my question would be, is this something that we incur, that the ALCC incurs every year? Or is this-
Yeah, the, the totals are different every year, but I know, I wish we had a employee here. But at least for the last three years, I know that we've had to have repairs done on the boiler.
I think back, and I know we've, we've had some maintenance work done there over time besides the redevelopment part of the building. But I think, I think back, some of the inspection, I think we sent staff there, it wasn't, well, probably in a couple years, if not longer, regarding from one end of the building to the other about, I'll just say inspecting from what might be needed. I, maybe something we can look for in the back, back information, whether it be from building or from Mr. Lewis. I'd like to see that, to see, you know, how we've, how we've expended on that facility and knowing the, the investment we've put into the building to, to keep it operational for the purposes we desire. But I, you know, the elevator and the boiler do seem to come up periodically. So, you know, I'd rather have it assessed correctly before we start continuing to spend, whether it be the LCC's money that's currently budget or additional funds. So that's my start point. And I think when we get that, we at least have some background and then see where we go. It's not a matter of, to me, how we get, it's, it's been paid, but really getting down the road, thinking about it before we just spend and forget about it. Next thing, you know, we're coming back again here and doing the same thing. I think the assessment is first for me, but other comments?
Yeah, your honor, I, I think when we redid the, if I recall right, when we redid the lease for the Sawyer House, the lease now basically states that the city is responsible for the basic infrastructure of the building and repairs. And ALCC is a city building, so it's, I think we were trying to use the women's center lease model that would be eventually applied to ALCC. So all of our leases, all of our leased properties, we treat them the same. But I, I do agree, I think we should have, we should take a look at the boiler and the elevators to make sure that we're just not spending money on Band-Aids that we're actually approaching the problem correctly.
So for me, it's not so much the reimbursement question as much as what we're spending to make sure we have the background.
Yeah.
And your, your recollection is right, John. We talked about our lease agreements for facilities that we may have with partners, is to kind of get them all consistent and similar in their, and we just haven't got there yet with the ALCC. So it brings it back to the forefront that for administration to how we're going to finalize that, next steps in that, in that agreement with the ALCC. And we've talked about that large vision and picture for that, and another item that's coming within this year and our goals and objectives yet again, another item. So we have been thinking and have had dialogue on it. So I think that's the start point, so.
So just to recap, I'm going to, we're going to look at our capital spending related to the boiler and elevator in the past with some of the programs that we've run through Mr. Lewis's operation here in the last several years, and then probably a greater boiler evaluation, you know, what is its condition and what long-term may be necessary to operate the facility, so that we're not looking at ongoing Band-Aids. And, and maybe even assess the preventative maintenance program. Sometimes the lack of that is, you know, leads to pretty sizable repairs and expenses. So we'll follow back up on that, bring it back to council.
Thank you.
You know, clearly in their case, it's within the fiscal year, so we'll have it probably in a month or so.
And then bringing the agreement forward again, seeing what's currently, and then how we look at that in our next steps with that would be great. Thanks, man. Next item.
I had a handout and didn't put that on, on my update, but it just kind of goes through a proposed outline for a city hall lease agreement with Lake Erie Transit. In my update to council, I'd mentioned that we'd met with Kohler and addressed a number of the items that came up, I think at our February fifth meeting, as it pertains to the project itself. I know that, that LET is comfortable with the proposed change, even though I think it reduced the square footage of their area by about a hundred and fifty square feet. But it addressed the concern that the clerk had. I think she's fine with it, and certainly the building official. And so, you know, what we talked about is, you know, looking at what the structure of a lease agreement would look like, certainly the twenty-five years, and can be terminated by mutual consent of each party. You know, an approved site plan, floor plan, that would be presented to the council at the, the March nineteenth meeting. Again, the project construction, LET would incur a hundred percent of it, and any of the soft costs related to it. And then certainly work with city administration regarding some construction specification, staging area, hours of work, and project schedule. Utilities, so Mark and Jedzinski and I had talked in the past, you know, I put if-not-metered proration of expenses based on square footage. I prefer to have it metered, and we may put that in there to the extent that we can with the project. Maintenance, certainly, they're responsible for the repair and maintenance of anything within the footprint as proposed, along with custodial care for the, the facility. Site maintenance, we would ask them to provide us six thousand a year towards site maintenance, which would include sidewalks, courtyard area, items that we're currently handling, but would be necessary as well to have them sharing the cost if, in fact, they're going to be part of the facility. You know, certainly that they, you know, specify the facility, be open during regular hours of operation. What you don't want is to have intermittent service. So if it's going to be used there, you've got to have it functioning during the hours of service that they have, and probably even have some language in there that they're to close within a certain period after their last service. They've agreed that they would keep it open during special events on weekends and holidays in the downtown. They'd certainly be responsible in maintenance and closing of the facility in that standard indemnification language, you know, as it pertains to LET patrons' use of the site and LET facility. You know, a surrender of possession when, in fact, this is over with, and/or if it's terminated by mutual consent. And then your standard language as it involves severability, insurance, notice, venue, dealing with governing law amendments, and any other miscellaneous items. So that would be the general structure of what you would look. I think it covers a number of the larger items that would be included in such a lease agreement. So I throw that out there. I don't want you surprised and ask you to look at something. Certainly, I'm open to any thoughts or suggestions with some of the language before it's presented to city council for consideration at, at the next meeting.
Questions or comments?
I'll just reiterate my position. I'll probably vote no on the lease because I don't feel that, I don't have a problem with LET having a, a transfer station in the downtown. I just don't think it's appropriate at city hall. I think that- I think that we need to take a look at the overall use of the city hall building. I think it'd be better, long-term, for us to have our committee meeting and commission room on the first floor and then be able to lease the third floor out to professional offices that could use the downtown location adjacent to the government facility. I think we're, I personally think we're just being short-sighted and, and we're not fully utilizing this building to its full capability. I mean, we have the third floor that's 25, 30% vacant or open for, for use. We have attorneys that are renting first floor space in the downtown area, taking away from retail and other businesses. I could see the third floor being leased out to realist, or to law firms that are currently in the downtown area that are right, then they would be right across the plaza from the county courthouse. I couldn't think of anything more convenient than, than that. And I think there's some sites in the downtown area that could have a standalone, a smaller version of a transfer center like they have on Telegraph Road in the downtown area. So I just, I, I've always had the impression that it's the tail wagging the dog on, on this issue, and I just think we're being short-sighted. The other part of it is, and this is just mainly long-term, is at the rate that the car companies are putting into autonomous vehicle research, I personally think 10 years from now, we're not even gonna have a bus service. It's all gonna be autonomous vehicles. So you're not gonna even have transfer stations, so. And that part of the industry is moving extremely fast, so I just have some real reservations with this. I, I just think that we're committing some of our better space to a transfer station at city hall, and then we're foregoing the opportunity to have good rental space on the third floor to other agencies or other businesses, so.
Other comments? Brian?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I disagree a little bit with Councilman Mike Langeli. I, I don't want to be a real estate agent here at city hall, number one, and I think that would put us in competition with other building owners in the downtown area, so I understand what you're saying, John, as far as that goes, but I, I still think that we, we need to be coherent when it comes to the other building owners downtown, because it can be very difficult to, to rent or lease your vacant areas that you have down there. We currently have some struggle with that now. I think LET has demonstrated that they're very, very good when it comes to taking care of any problem that they've had down here. They certainly do provide a very good service that's needed to the residents that are here. You know, at first I was not in favor of them being down there, but now that I see them here, see the responsibility they're taking and, and the action that they take when, when something happens, I think they've been pretty good, pretty good partners when it comes to being here at city hall. They, they plan to take this all on their own, cost-wise, we would have nothing into it whatsoever. You know, reconstruction of the, of a little bit of the smaller portion of city hall certainly is, is very advantageous to us, I think. The route currently goes through the city, this is about as good of a spot you're gonna get for, for a transit area downtown. It's very convenient to be here for somebody that's riding that bus. I've spoken with some of those people that actually do ride the bus. They do appreciate it being there. I, I know that they'd appreciate some warmer or cooler climates, depending on the season, so I, I think it'd be accommodating for our residents that, that live in the city of Monroe to have it here. I certainly understand your, your concerns, though, but I, I think for, for the model we're looking for right now, I think it would, it would serve us well.
Other comments? You know, I, I know that we don't have the renderings of the changes for the design. That was a comment that I had, I still look, I know the clerk had an opportunity to review it because it's mainly impacting, it would have impacted her office and, and access. So I know we'll have that, so that's one thing I, I know that's still kind of pending to see. And I think about the use and I think about the portion of our, our public that uses public transportation, and I think it is important we have a downtown location. I think that whether it's winter or it's hot, it's unfortunate when I see people standing out there that have a need. I think we should try to service that need. Internally, obviously we're renovating the council chambers, and part of that is for safer environment, but also more open environment, and also environment for certain boards and commissions to utilize that currently utilize this space. I, other than the DDA, can't, I'm trying to think, what are the boards and commissions meet upstairs? So I don't know that we're losing space that is, is gonna be readily used by some of our other commissions or boards. I agree, we should be renovating the up, up third floor of the facility and finding uses for that, but I don't think that's an impact one way or the other in relation to the use of the space down here. That's a whole different item and opportunity that I think that we do have. You know, it's interesting, you talk about autonomous vehicles, well, there's autonomous buses now, so it's not about having a bus that's driven, it's a bus that just shows up and takes people, whether they're large or small or individual cars. I think that technology is moving fast, and I agree with you, John. I think in, in 10 years, autonomous vehicles will be readily throughout the streets of not only the state but, and in Monroe, but that doesn't mean that, that it's not gonna happen on buses as well. So I, I think, while that's a future item, it doesn't prohibit me from looking to support this, but I look forward to seeing the, the renderings to make sure that we still have the access for the internal on the first floor that was raised as well. Other comments? So, oh, go ahead, Andrew.
I kind of want to split the difference here a little bit. I think it would be wonderful to see that transfer station be located at some sort of parking facility or play into a larger transportation, county transportation system. I would love to see that. Right now, I don't know that there is another location that exists in, in the way that I would like it to for that change to happen and, and for that change to be justified. I would love to see it, I don't know that it's coming in the next five years. If we could have such a discussion, now that's not gonna happen in the next couple of weeks here, but moving forward, if such a discussion of a, of a larger transportation strategy took place, I think that we could find a better place, like Councilman Mike Langeli suggests, for, for the transfer station, but right now, I, I don't know that there is a better place that exists than at city hall. I'm not sure.
Well, one of the, one of the locations I took a look at, which is in the downtown, is the city's parking lot over on the corner of McComb and Front Street. It is long enough to accommodate the buses, it's a development site, they could put a small transfer station right there, and it's right in the, almost the core of the downtown Right along the river. So, I mean, there, there are sites available. I don't, I, I, I didn't want to get into it with the general manager of LET. He said they analyzed it and it was gonna cost him $40,000 more. I liked, I don't want to get into it at this point, but I would really like to see how they came up with the numbers in terms of why would it cost $40,000 more to move a transfer station one block to the east? So I just think that there's other alternatives. Like I said, this kind of came out of nowhere, and it's like the tail wagging the dog, and I, I just feel very uncomfortable with it. I just think that there's other options that we haven't looked at because we're just, for some reason, we're just being, this is just consistently being thrown on the table for us to make a decision on, and I just don't think we've thoroughly looked at all the options, so. But like I said, you know, it seems like the majority of council wants to do it, that's fine. I'm, I'm not in favor of it, not in favor of the lease. So at this, at this location, don't have a problem with LET having a downtown transfer station, and I'd be more than happy to work on a site and with them cooperatively, but not at this site, just doesn't make sense to me. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just, you know, with Councilman Mike Langeli, I will tell you, the, the notion to consider this actually came from myself, what to do with the space after the credit union left, and we talked a little bit about maybe a coffee shop, but clearly it just, its configuration is kind of a challenge given the, you know, it, the angles that go with it, and, and the other part of it is, is with the patrons with LET and their lack of area during the winter and even in the summer, and, and the effect that it has on the operation of city hall, which I heard early on when I came on board almost two years ago. So I'm the one that actually, you know, was the one that initiated, to be honest with you, and so I was comfortable with it then, certainly to, you know, again, putting it to, to use, and, and as I said before, in some ways, our city hall, particularly on the first floor, does function as a transfer station as well. If you were to move to another location, obviously that would have a positive impact on the city hall, but, but, but I'm the one that initiated the, the dialogue with them on, on this project, so.
So, I thought it was good. Okay. So there's, obviously from the city manager looking, as this is an informational discussion at this point, with the presentation at the March 19 meeting, there'll be opportunities to get further inquiries to the city manager if there's things that need to be clarified as we move forward. I think that's your attempt was to say.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I don't want to spring something on the council with any surprise at that meeting, so.
We'll see how this come forward. Next item.
Mr. Cochran, you want to provide a brief legislative update of what's going on?
Honorable Mayor, Councilman Mark Cochran, Economic Development Coordinator. As we've discussed in the past, you've requested a legislative update from time to time to hear from city administrative positions, some things that are going on in Lansing that may pertain to the city, and I don't, I don't have much for you unfortunately, or fortunately today. Just three quick items. The first is Senate Bill 393, which was an act that's waiting to be signed by the governor. It consolidates all of the tax incremental finance authorities, enabling acts into one single act. Not much of an implication on the city because each act was incorporated into the overall new bill without any changes, but it did increase some reporting and transparency requirements that we haven't seen yet. So the, the, the charge was for Treasury to come up with a new report for locals to report back into the state government and charge Treasury to work with the locals when they're developing that form, so. That's, that's a state of where that is. I think Councilman Felder, you, you talked about the potholes earlier. Last week, the governor signed a bill that would appropriate $175 million for road infrastructure across the state. The city's gonna receive $143,201 this summer to go along with our fiscal year 2018 appropriations, so I'm sure Patrick and administration will look at ways to spend that wisely considering the, the large pothole problem that we've been experiencing the past couple of weeks. And then finally, the proposed lead and copper rules, so it's quickly moving throughout the state with the public comment period ending March 21st. I can tell you that the, the state, the city has been working with our partners from folks like SimCOG and the Michigan Municipal League and the consortium that Barry Leroy belongs to, monitoring the language and the conversation that's going on at the state level, pretty fast and furious at this point. So we've seen some draft language, nothing has finalized yet, but I can tell you when, when that is finalized with the input from the stakeholders the city's cooperating with. I'm sure you'll receive a full update on that at a future work session, so.
Thanks, Mark. Is there questions for Mark on these or maybe something else? Brian?
Yeah, the road appropriation of the $143,201, is that in addition to the, I thought, okay.
Yeah, it's leftover funds from last fiscal year.
Roughly about $290,000 is what we're.
No, I, I apologize. I think earlier this afternoon, I was talking to Councilman Lomore and, and said, this was an additional above the 147 that I thought this is, it's, it's only the 143 is what the total is.
Okay.
There is not an add-on like I had alluded to earlier, and I apologize for that.
So another Band-Aid?
Yeah, but we'll take it.
Exactly.
Take it.
Fiscal year 2018, we're gonna see the first appropriation from the roads bill package that was passed recently, too. That's gonna be about $150 million across the state. Obviously, as all the stakeholders in Lansing and the locals have pointed out, though, that's not nearly enough to fix the problems in the state, so ongoing, ongoing problem and discussion.
Just a comment on the lead and copper rule because it's moving forward and, and obviously it's, it focuses on water infrastructure and, and water lines and lead lines, but just, I just, my comment, because having been in some meetings and some sessions, you know, you know, while that is an important item that should be dealt with across the state, it's actually lead paint and dust, which is the primary source of lead contamination for the public and the youth. But it doesn't address any of that, and I know that's gonna be some of those topics that are brought up at the, at the public hearings. You know, just having, without an asset management plan of how we're gonna go about potentially replacing lead lines when it's, you know, if the corrosive and the corrosion control methods are met, it reduces the items that have occurred where that there is lead poisoning. There's so much to it that needs to be discussed, and hopefully the legislators will do that as they look at this bill. I know the comments have been shared already, at least I have, and with our state representative and others. It's not that we don't, at least I don't think council or anybody doesn't want to have safe water, but there's so many other components to it. I'm just kind of making my comments here. I think that I, hopefully they'll be considering all of those items. The city of Monroe alone, if it's, the bill's passed and simply says, "Take all lead lines out," it's eight to nine million dollars. And it's not that they are, have contaminants or that they're in bad condition, it's just without an asset management plan and a scientific research and complaints of there being an issue and the testing that our departments do and testing that and working with the residents to see if there is or isn't a problem. So I know I'm just kind of, I'm not really questioning here, Mark, I'm just kind of saying I hope that the, all these things will be looked at, and I know you'll be following up and monitoring the public hearings in that force.
Yep, and, and in discussions with Barry Leroy today, we were talking about a lot of ambiguity that's in the draft rules right now. Certainly if, if we're required to bear the cost of that eight to nine million dollars to replace all the lines, is it, is it a possibility that we can seek reimbursement later for that? There's no, there's nothing in the rule. That's just an example of some of the feedback that we're gonna be providing over the next month, excuse me, so that there is that clarity involved as well.
Right?
Yeah, and even so, think about replacing all of that. It's, it's gonna be a timely process, so eight to nine million dollars could be over pretty much a long haul there.
Yeah, and how quickly we have to do that in coordination with other services that we provide to removing lines when we're also trying to remove roads if the timeline is so expedited that we can't coordinate that with road repairs as well is a problem.
Huge.
That's where that plan comes in, to really look at it long-term, from first year to three years to five years to 10 years and how we get there, because not all the lines are, are an issue, quite honestly. And we need to fix those and repair those, remove those that are. So other comments on these?
Let me just ask the city attorney, I know there was something that we received from Mike Watts, who represents Protoc, Mike represented us a little bit with our issue with the distributed antenna systems.
So three, if I may, three updates for you. One directly on that issue, there's been a hearing scheduled on Senate Bill 637, which essentially, at its core, seeks to eliminate control of rights of way for the new DAS technology, so that is ongoing at this point in time. Essentially, the suggestion has been that this is a freight train that's coming and will likely be the subject of judicial challenges down the road. Also, Mike Watts, he gave an update in terms of House Bill 5670, which is designed to create a broadband board to serve unserved and underserved areas. He's got some critique of that, but that's essentially another one that has been proposed. And then lastly, this is just a more of a general update, there has been a Senate bill introduced that would eliminate governmental immunity for individuals that engage in sexual misconduct, which would be a change to the current governmental immunity, so I just raised that one for your knowledge as well.
You know, a comment on the cell towers, I know there's something, I was talking with the state representative, and he says, "Yeah, the road commissions." I said, "Well, that doesn't address the cities." There's a, a bill that's out there that's more for the townships and the county about distance and right-of-ways and fees. This is entirely different when you talk about municipal. you talk about the municipality and right-of-ways. Being with SEMCOG and having the opportunity to have been in Washington, it's also the, the infrastructure plan. One of the items that's embedded in that national plan is that the FCC will have authority to allow placement of small cell towers without local input or, or control. And we shared that that's why I'd be dissatisfied with that change. So that's a federal, but on the other hand, when I hear that it's local as well in the state, we should be concerned and we should make sure we share our message back to our legislators how, you know, I just think about putting towers in the, in the right-of-ways and the, along the street. And then when we have to do infrastructure work, who's going to pay for that removal and return of that cell tower? It, it's, it'll come to, I think, a larger discussion in Lansing. Look forward to that. So thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
Vince?
Yeah, I was jumping around a little bit. The one thing I forgot to discuss was, you know, soon after, I guess, the passing of Judge Costello, I had an individual that called and, and, you know, had suggested, you know, "We consider maybe renaming a little street that has a couple houses on it, NIMs, just Judge Way or something like that." And, and a couple of thoughts. One is, I found out that there's history associated with the name itself. And then the other part is, I'm going to offer up something, we talked about it at a staff meeting, and Mr. Green provided, I should have probably given you a copy of a monument policy. But one of the things, there's a process that it goes through there. But one of the things that's, and I think sometimes, you know, that, and I'll just read the one paragraph, "It's erection of any monument, memorial, or commemorative structure shall meet the five-year waiting period requirement. The waiting period may be modified by, as deemed appropriate, by the city council." And, and again, this is the placement of a monument, but I think part of the essence of the policy is, you know, that, that there isn't anything that's reactive, that there is a time to contemplate, you know, what the impacts would be on that. And so I throw that out there, that, you know, we do have something. If we were by chances, Mr. Green had suggested to update that, you could always include streets into that. But, but I promised the individual, I'll throw it out before the city council for their thoughts and comments and we'll go from there.
Thoughts or comments from council?
I did share with the city manager when, when he mentioned it, and I thought about that. And of course, the NIMs name, for those that are maybe in history know his, the background of the NIMs name related to Civil War, it was a person had, and the NIMs family had large properties long ago. But I think the point is, is knowing that history and just moving forward and say, "Well, just rename the street," it really doesn't give that consideration and recognition of the past of the person and how important that was when it was named decades ago. So I, I think that it's kind of like take a slower process of that and evaluate that and look at it and say, because, you know, Judge Costello served well in our community as a judge. And she had, and her story and how she became a judge is, is significant. And I also think that in the bar perspective, when you think not just the city of Monroe, but the county as well. So I think that by taking kind of the pause approach and thinking it through allows you to maybe find a way that the recognition, not that a street isn't important, but there, there may be other opportunities as we think about it collectively here, but also input from the community, but for a recognition that is due in some fashion. So, but I just think removing somebody that was named for and not knowing the, the exact history, I was able to, I'd, I'd heard the name before and that's why I knew there was history related to Civil War and his great service to our country. So, just my comment.
Your honor, I thought about it. I know that was, it was in the manager's, one of the manager's updates. You know, Judge Costello was one of the first women, you know, in the Monroe County Bar, one of the first female judges in the county, looked at as a mentor by a lot of people, both men and women. You know, I thought about it and, you know, I don't know if naming a street is the best thing to do, but, you know, we do have other facilities. For example, the Monroe Women's Center, likelihood maybe in the future of naming one of the meeting rooms after her with a plaque and with, so people, because that's used by a lot of women. A lot of women organizations use the facility and it's what could be, it's, it's those type of things that I think you need to think about in terms of what their appropriate application is, in terms of recognizing people. But certainly not, she certainly is deserving of some recognition, but for sure.
I agree. And I think, you know, it's, well, it's maybe just a recognition of a small street, but, you know, it's a dead end and a dead end. And I just think that we could elevate that recognition. And I think your ideas are some of those that will come out. And I think we have opportunities to really think this through and make it something that's very, very deserving for all of our career and, and history here in Monroe.
Thanks. You know, and, and, your honor, maybe it's something we asked the Women's Center. I don't really foresee in the future the building being used. I see the building always being used for a Women's Center, has been for like 25 or 30, 35 years. Maybe there's an opportunity at the Women's Center, like an outdoor memorial, for various women that have been involved in the, kind of like the, the overall history and, and culture of Monroe that they get recognized collectively in an area. I don't, it, then the other part of it is, is I know that part of our goals and objectives is to, you know, maybe institute a culture, cultural and arts committee. Maybe the idea of looking at a monument policy is consistent with that, you know, in terms of long-term, you know. So we don't end up, I, you know, Monroe's got this tendency of putting monuments all over the place. And I think you've got to do it kind of strategically to really make a statement, so.
Good. Other comments? Seeing none. Oh, Brian?
Yeah, I definitely agree with everybody's sentiment. She definitely has a legacy here in Monroe. Raising six children and being a judge at the same time, I can't imagine the pressure that she had doing that. There definitely is recognition needed for her because she not only was a tremendous asset to the city, but as a judge as well and, and obviously as a mother. So she needs to be recognized in some form or manner. And I agree that we, you know, a dead-end street may not be the best spot because not everybody's going to recognize that. And I think something more recognizable, perhaps, maybe a monument, something. She definitely deserves something here in the city.
Very well. Vince, other items?
I have nothing else at this time, your honor. Thank you.
I see that we're really pretty much on the time here. So seeing no other comments, I think we'll close the work session. Thank you and get ready for your next 17 minutes.